Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, July 10th, 2025 meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:00 PM and we are meeting this evening at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We do have late cam recording. Is anyone else recording? I hear none. We do have a quorum this evening with Mr. Lodge, Mr. Wilga, and myself. I'm assuming that Jack will be showing up shortly and John will not be joining us this evening. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing, site plan review for 19 Main Street, continued to this evening. Upon the application for a site plan review submitted by C.D. Dankowitz Realty, Inc. For the construction of a proposed mixed-use retail and business development comprised of two buildings and associated site improvements. We have received a request from the applicant to continue to the August 14th meeting. Would someone like to make that motion?
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for 19 Main Street to our next meeting.
It's August 14th.
August 14th? Sorry.
Okay, so we have motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Kathy, I know you said the peer review needs a second, a third review, though.
Yes. So we've done it both ways where we've asked for additional funding from the applicant or they've passed on having Apex come in in lieu of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody have a... I'm okay with Apex passing if, as long as, you know...
Yeah, you might want to wait to see what that comes back as, of how much issues there are with it, and maybe then decide.
Okay.
Well, because we already got the... To see what the applicant's response is to that, how many of those issues they kind of deal with.
All right, okay. Yeah, we could do that, so we'll wait until our next meeting then.
Okay.
Okay. We'll put that on for that then, just to determine.
Just so you're aware of it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, public hearing, 7:00 PM, accessory dwelling unit, ADU, site plan review for 225 County Street. Upon the application for an ADU site plan review and approval submitted by William Fuller for a proposed 900-square-foot ADU with an attached garage and a garage underneath, possible vote. Hi, Jamie. Oh, yes, lot coverage percentage, thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
So did you... So I'll let you introduce yourself first.
Good evening, Jamie. This is Nancy, the consultant meeting. I think it's the last meeting. There was a question of lot coverage, which I just provided you with a letter through. The lot itself does fall underneath the 25%. I did receive a question from Kathy. I think one or more of the board members might have asked, considering that the property does have a plan on the registry showing that there's two lots.
Right.
And it does have two map block and lots. First, I want to reference that there's just one deed for the property. The deed itself references both lots. But as a follow-up, I also spoke with the building inspector today, just to seek clarification. What he said is what I've always understood to be is you can have, if you own lots that are side-by-side in the same ownership, the internal setbacks, the setbacks unto themselves don't exist, meaning that this is functioning as one whole lot. If he was to sell off the lot that had been divided, he would create, he could potentially create non-conformities. But right now, this is the lot at 3.8 acres, and that's how zoning would view it.
Okay.
And just a way to think of it as well is, if you were to go down into like Clark Shores, the lots originally there, a lot of them were cut up into 5,000-square-foot lots, but several of them are together with houses crossing over original lot lines. They were on a deed, they'll say Lot 202, 203, 204, and 205. They don't have to, they don't have to go in and draw a new plan and record it saying that those internal lines are extinguished. They're just records of it, so...
Right, they don't have to, but they, they could, so...
Oh, surely they could.
I thought it was, now, what did the assessors tell you that they...
The assessor says that that plan takes precedent because it was newer than the deed.
Okay, so that's what... So because they subdiv, they divided the lot...
The plan's not newer than the deed. The deed actually references the plan. I actually brought the deed with me.
Oh, you, okay.
That's my question. But I would still disagree with that interpretation as well as far zoning is concerned.
So...
That deed references the plan that you're referencing, the old back plan that creates the two lots?
Okay, so...
So that was 2022?
Twenty...
Yes, it was a few years back.
Yeah, okay.
But it was after that A&R plan that was...
Okay. ...reported 2021.
But how are you able to create a non-conforming lot?
It's not necessarily creating a non-conforming lot. They...
I know it's a setback, that would be the...
It could possibly be. When planning boards looking at a plan, an A&R plan, they're looking at frontage and lot area and to make sure that the frontage is legitimate, that we're not creating a new road. So whoever put forward that plan, the planning board at that time felt it met the A&R statutes. It's not saying it's a buildable lot when you endorse an A&R plan. All it is is saying that it meets the A&R requirements. What we're saying is that the two lots are owned by the same person, they're together, and they're considered to be one lot right now. And they are actually on one deed, but they didn't even have to be. They could be on two separate deeds and still be together.
So with them being on one deed, can they later on...
Oh, certainly.
Create two deeds and...
Certainly, and that's how a lot of, so, for example, let's say that you owned 100 acres in town and you did a subdivision. And you created 50 lots. You would have that original deed and you would deed out Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3 accordingly. You'd still have the same deed. It would be the responsibility of whoever's doing a title search to go back and see proof that you've deeded those out, to see what you now own. There would be no need to rewrite the deed.
Okay, so I guess, I mean... It does, it does show that the... This was recorded in 2021, so, yeah, I know you're just going by what the assessor said. So I don't know if he didn't see this on the registry page or what he looked at, so...
That's actually referenced on the assessor's field card as well. For both properties, it's the same deed.
Okay. So, yeah, so the lot coverage percentage, it looks like it's with the proposed is 21.6, so you're still within the lot coverage area?
Yes.
The only thing is we haven't gotten a set of, a decision with the conditions from town council yet. We could close it and continue and get the decision, but I'd like to keep it open just in case there's any, you know, back and forth on the decision, if that's okay. Well, closing it doesn't make it happen any faster because we still have to get the decision. So this is the very first ADU that's come to town, and so town council has to write up the decision in order for it to be recorded. And this is, you know, this is a process that is just being set up as, as we go. So we don't have a set of standard conditions for this. Town council has been asked to provide that to us, and when we have it, we'll provide it to you. You'll review it and see, as long as you're okay with it, it can be voted on and, and then you can move forward.
When do we expect that to happen?
I, I don't have a timeframe for when she'll get back to us. But I, I would assume that...
I mean, she will be at the next meeting.
She, okay, so she will be at our next meeting.
When is that?
July 24th.
So this two...
She expected to have it at the next meeting? I mean, this is like, we're, we're going on a month and a half, and this has been long. We're going on three months of waiting for this to get approved.
He needs to come up.
Yeah, come state your name for the record.
He needs to come up for the record.
Brian Cave, I'm the contractor on the side to build the project, contractor project. I've been working with Mr. Fuller to build the project. He has hired me. His elderly mother is looking forward to moving into this and getting her out of her two-story apartment building. She is very much looking forward to being into this one-story unit. She is having a very difficult time.
That's all, that's all understood and I have sympathy, but like I said, we need to have a decision, and if we close it, you won't be able to give us feedback. So, so ideally...
I'm having a hard time understanding why it's taken so long to move through this process, like...
It's not, it really isn't.
Well, it is because it's taken us two months to get, even get to the meeting. Like, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, but it's taken, even us to get to the meeting, it took me a month just to get a schedule to a meeting, and now it's taken us two months to get to this point. Like, why is it, why is it taking us a month to get a decision written?
It's, so it hasn't taken a month to get a decision written. You were just on our last meeting, which is two weeks.
You were just on...
An extra week because of the bye week, but... It's hard, like I said, we, so, we, this is something that just passed.
So the decision got to be written between now and, I mean, next, are we going to have the decision written for the next meeting?
Ideally, yeah. I would, it would have been nice to have it for this meeting, but, you know, I'm not in control of what they do with their time. So if, if she's at our next meeting, it would be easier to go through and make sure that it's completed.
Okay, well, whatever, I mean... I guess whatever, whatever the board decides.
Okay, so we can continue it to...
Continue to...
The 24th?
Yeah.
Get a set of conditions, you'll have a chance to review it, and then...
Kathy, can you send those email when you get those over to me? Appreciate that, thank you. All right.
And nobody had any more questions? Everything was cleared up?
Yeah.
Any questions, Jack?
For the ADU? Okay.
Yeah, and thanks again, Jamie, for providing some info.
Not a problem.
And, and, um... Have they, have they done any other, I know you said Board of Health, they already went through...
We talked to the Board of Health. I don't even think that they have to necessarily, there's no tanks going in, so I think it's purely just Board of Health signing off on the building permit. We've been through conservation.
And what about, were there any, was there any feedback from what the fire chief had said for comments about the access through the...
I, I gave the, I emailed the letter that night to both Brian and the property owner. The property owner watched on TV, as I'm sure he is right now, and he called me after the meeting. We spoke. He said that the ambulances have, they've been to the house before and they've had no problem getting in or out.
And there is another access into the property besides that one right in the front. There is another entrance down further.
Right, I think he reviewed both of them.
He did. The secondary entrance was, is the larger entrance. He, he seemed to feel that it was going to be adequate.
Okay.
So, but the, the letter was passed, like I said, it would be, and we did discuss it. I expressed the concern that the fire department had.
Okay. Did you need this back or...
No, no, those are for you, and you, yeah, you can have that.
Um, so would someone like...
Jack, yeah.
No? Would someone like to make the motion to continue this to the July 24th?
I make a motion that we continue the site plan review for 225 County Street to July 24th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we will see you then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. How you feeling?
Agenda item number three, we have a public hearing, special permit for 160 Bedford Street, continued to this evening. Request for a special permit under section 270-7.412 to allow a commercial parking facility. We have a request to continue this to the July 24th meeting. If someone would like to make that motion?
I move that we continue the public hearing for 160 Bedford Street until July 24th, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Agenda item number four, we have a set of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yeah.
Any edits?
No changes.
They look good to me, too. I, I wasn't there, but I did watch.
I move to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the May 22nd, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number five, OSRD discussion, possible vote. So in our packet, thank you, Kathy, for digging these up. We have an OSRD best practices in the Serpide region, which was very interesting to read through, as well as an open space residential design best practices for green zoning. And Kathy, I guess you attended a Q and A?
Yes.
My hope is that we could get an OSRD to bring to Falltown meeting. We've got, we've done multiple drafts, we've met with conservation, we've met with Board of Health. I went to open, open space. I feel as though, at this point, there's just some, you know, we talked about adding a senior component. We talked about adding an affordable component. We've gone back and forth about the size requirement.
Can we talk about agriculture, too? Or is that...
That was different.
That was different.
So this is just the open space residential design by law?
Yeah, okay.
That would allow a lot, you know, a parcel, 50%, put aside to open space, the rest of it be developed into smaller lots. And that had been the concern from Board of Health originally, so now we have, you know, the parameters that they want to see, lots not to be smaller than for those sizes. I think, so we looked into it specific to Rocky Woods, and we, we saw that, you know, it wasn't a good fit because that wasn't what they were looking to do there. But at this point, where we're... Looking to, um...
What was the lot size the Board of Health was talking about?
I believe it was the 30,000 square foot for a three-bedroom.
So a three-quarter, three-quarter acre?
So, yeah, so not to be smaller than that for a three-bedroom.
Okay.
And then I think we, the other things that we talked about, and I know we had taken out the HOA portion of who retains the ownership of it, and we had included the chapter or Article 97 for the property, the open space to be permanently restricted, which I think was a good, good way to go in that. So my thought was, meet with Serpide, send them our draft. You know, we can tell them this is what we want to see and maybe have them help guide us with those few items that we still have questions about, about, you know, the affordability component, about the senior lot, about the lot size. Because this is some good feedback. It, um, it tells you what the different communities are doing, and you can go and look at, at what they have for these, their bylaw for this. One thing that I starred was the best practice for all developable land is zone residential. I don't even remember if we added that, if that's even mentioned in the OSRD that it, you know, for residentially zoned. I don't remember. I think that was in there.
I recall.
So I feel like that's probably a major thing we, we want to see it just...
We, yeah, we may just assume.
Residential zone, yeah. Another thing was best practice number 10, for the continuity, relationship to previously protected open space. And just kind of reading through, it makes me think maybe, I know we had originally, I think it was either 20 or 25 acres that we were looking at for it to qualify. But if there's a smaller lot size that creates the continuity, a wild white quarter, maybe we don't have...
Does, does there need to be a, does there need to be a minimum size?
No, there doesn't, because if, if you read through this, you can see what other towns do as far as size. And some have it, some don't, some have it by, by right, some have it by special permit. We were looking at special permit. I think that's still important to include.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely on that. But I don't know that we need to have a minimum size. I mean, just... Just because it doesn't create a floor that we can't get underneath.
Right, that's true, too.
You know, gives you just a little bit more flexibility on a, on a requirement that kind of doesn't, doesn't need to be.
Right, right. Is there, from this packet, is there any town here in southeastern Mass that really stands out to people in terms of their bylaw that... Well, not so much that, but, you know, in terms of how it's written, that really checks all the boxes, if you will?
Well, so, we did, we kind of did that back when, and...
Right.
Prior to you joining Planning Board, but we, we looked at a town that had, you know, no sewer and no water infrastructure, because that was what, the original one was based off of Foxborough, and they have those things. So we wanted a town that more resembled Lakeville. And I can't tell you off the top of my head, I don't remember for sure what town it was that we looked at, but there were a few that we looked at, that we finally, and I even, I loaded it up. I loaded it up with like all these other things, and then I think the next draft that came out from the former planner was, you know, all of it was out, and I was just like, well, I want to see this back in, this back in. So I did, you know, try to get some of it back in, but I don't want to, I don't want to start the process all over again at the ground floor.
Sure.
That's why I thought maybe Serpide could just look at what we have, because, you know, town councils already reviewed it. We, in my opinion, we only have those few items that still need to be resolved and maybe get Serpide to give us some feedback and then help us get it over the finish line. We always have 20 hours per year, and now that we're in July, it starts over. So we have 20 hours for Serpide to do some work for us. I don't know if it's just as simple as, you know, giving Taylor a call, see if she, she would be taking this on, and...
I don't think so.
No?
I think she does more the housing. I could be wrong, though.
Okay.
The, um, the people from Serpide that were at that presentation, it was all different people.
Okay. So ideally, I'd like a meet, maybe we could do it Zoom? I'd like it to just be like a one-item agenda, you know, where we can just talk about this, have Serpide there, even if it's over Zoom, and just kick it back and forth with them and see what they can do just to finalize something that we can all...
Not to change subject, but when is the Falltown meeting? Has a date been determined yet?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Usually, what, the second week in November?
It's in November, yeah.
The second Monday or the second Tuesday or something like that?
Well, no, it'll be, um, it'll be on the, it'll be part of the meeting to be voted on. Because, you know, I, I agree, I mean, you know, we really need to look at getting this knocked out.
At least bring it to town meeting and let the people decide.
Yeah, and I think the sooner the better, because I don't know what's on Serpide's, um, you know, what's on their docket in terms of what they're doing for other towns right now, but if we can get it at least on their radar, you know, shortly, you know.
And that's why I think, I'm hoping it's a small lift for them, that 20 hours could do it, and maybe just one meeting and they could send us the draft, we can review it.
Because we, because, yeah, because we've already done a little bit of the work for them, too.
Yeah, there's been a lot of...
So, I, I mean, if it, if it means reviewing it and so forth, coming to a meeting, at least we start discussing it, because as you know, all these town meetings, even though it's a couple times a year, they always creep up.
I know, they do.
And then something else is on our docket and so forth, and it's like, oh, yeah, that's coming up, so, um, yeah.
So when, when is the kickoff for the rules and regs?
Next meeting.
It is the next meeting? Oh, shoot.
Like I was saying, things creep up.
That's going to be a heavy one.
Next meeting, yes.
Do we have a scheduled time for Serpide?
No. Do you want me to reach out and see maybe 6:30 for them?
Yeah, 6 or 6:30, yeah, because if we, if we could maybe do a kickoff with that and then say, if we have time, like, do a half hour for the kickoff, a half hour, go over this, if we could, I mean, that's going to be a doozy of a meeting. But at least we could get the ball rolling with that, if, if, because I don't, if Taylor's coming for the kickoff and then there's somebody else, though, maybe it doesn't work. But even if we do a Zoom, I think, just, just throw it, if you could throw it out there to Serpide and...
Yeah, I will. I will reach out to the person that actually forwarded me this information, so...
Okay, so we'll look at 6 or 6:30, Serpide. We'll say 6 o'clock if they're able to do OSRD and 6:30 if not. And if they can't, if they can't fit OSRD, then we'll do a Zoom at their convenience, right? If that works for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll just keep all the public hearings at 7 o'clock, and we'll just start early for that purpose. Okay.
Sorry, Kathy.
All right, um... So we do have a possible vote. Do we want to take a vote to, um, pursue utilizing Serpide hours to come, complete a final draft of the OSRD?
Yeah, I, um, I'd like to make a motion that we utilize the proposed fiscal year 2026 budgeted hours for the OSRD plan with Serpide to be discussed for next meeting, or...
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say specific then, if we're going to see on their timeframe.
Based upon, um, um, Serpide's timeframe.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so that'll be good to hopefully get something that we can all feel good about bringing to town meeting. The next item on our agenda is 40Y, discussion, possible vote. So this, thank you, Kathy, for including this. This is one more of the items that came from the, uh, the state in the Affordable Housing Package. If you've had a chance to read through it, if, this is all just taken off of the website. They have a comment period, that the comments are actually due by July 25th. So if we have any comments, we could send them back. I don't know if, have you, have you all had a chance to read through these? There's a few things that I, like, that stand out for anybody that's interested in what this 40Y is. Section 3 under minimum requirements for compliance. So it's, it's considered a starter home zoning district, and it has to have a density of not fewer than four units per acre of developable land. It does allow for accessory dwelling units of not more than 600 square foot on those lots.
So what are they considering units per se?
So, so this is number three. Not less than 50% of the starter homes to be developed in a proposed starter home zoning district, excluding accessory dwelling units, shall contain not fewer than 300. excluding accessory dwelling units, shall contain not fewer than three bedrooms. So that's a lot of like negatives. It's like double negatives, so. I, I think what it's saying is that you have to have at least three bedrooms for fifty percent of those units. So the thing is, there would have to be a designated area and still have to go through town meeting. As a, as a overlay zoning, just like we have the smart growth forty R down by the rail. I think the difficult part would be determining where in town this makes sense to do it if the town were to go forward with this. The other part of it, um, not less than ten percent shall be affordable, which is good because now when we, when you talk about bringing housing in, um, you don't want to lose that ten percent.
Right.
That affordability rate. So like a typical subdivision comes in, they don't have to have ten percent of those units be affordable. But these, at least ten percent of them have to be affordable, which doesn't move you any farther away from your safe harbor. With the safe har, with the, um, compliance with the forty B safe harbor. I'm not going to go into all of it, but I'm just going to kind of skim the, the few things that I feel are important. Under section five. So this is something that in the annual report has to be done, similar to the forty R. So somebody is going to have to be, if this were to pass, someone in town would have to be responsible for the yearly reporting. There is a one-time incentive payment. So upon the approval of the district, there is an incentive. In accordance with the schedule set forth in subsection A of section nine of chapter forty R. So that refers to the forty R zoning.
Right.
And a bonus payment of three thousand dollars for each starter home created in the starter home zoning district. So you do get a small incentive.
That's peanuts.
It is peanuts, but it's
Three thousand dollars?
You don't get anything for forty B. So, uh, forty R, you do get a yearly amount, but that fluctuates. And I know, um, it was much less this past year than, um, had been expected. So the other, the other part I found was interesting. If no building permits are issued for a starter home in that district within five years, then it back, uh, it revokes the approval and you have to repay the incentive too. So I, I thought that was an interesting thing to include. So that, that just tells you they're looking to get it done ASAP. So I don't really have comments. I don't, I don't have comments really myself.
If this passes, there'll be three chapters, right? You have forty B, forty R, forty Y.
That pertain to high density housing. Yeah. Yeah, because the forty R has that forty S component, which is the part of it.
Yeah, I I'm not impressed.
No, I think it's just one more thing that was very rushed out.
Yeah, I, I'm just, you know.
I'd like to see, this would be, I'd be fine with forty B being replaced by it, but I but, um, in addition to, I don't, I don't know if I see the benefit.
So if, go ahead.
So no, forty, so the forty Y is something that a town, it's not, it's not like forty B where forty B was based on if you were a rail community. And now it became something that even if you're not a rail community, you have to comply. This is something at this point where, just like the forty R, the town has to accept it at town meeting. So you would have to bring it, you'd have to designate an area, create an overlay for the forty Y. And then it would have to go to town meeting and pass with a two-thirds majority vote. So the, so tonight, really, like if this planning board has any comments to send back to E H L C, right? That's who we're sending. The Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. So do we have any comments that we would like to send back?
Please sit down. I'll sit down and make something.
Well, they're due by the twenty-fifth though, so.
Yeah, I, I can, I can do it in the next couple of days. I would have you something at the beginning of the week.
I mean, what would be helpful is to see from E H L C is, you know, all the chapters plus this new proposed chapter and what are the benefits of each one? I mean, yeah, it's, some of it's listed here, but again, this isn't, this is going to be, you know, an involving thing. With, with forty Y, if it gets, you know, if it gets approved, other things are going to be added on to this. I mean, just knowing how the state is and how they've been somewhat reckless the past few years, if not more in terms of housing and, you know, small towns like Lakeville are all, you know, left holding the bag with, you know, trying to figure out resources and whatnot. So without going too far down a rabbit hole, I mean, you know, I, I think what would be helpful, if anything, is to know what are some of the benefits for a town to not just have a overlay district for forty Y? But also, you know, what is the comparative differences between forty Y versus forty R versus?
Yeah, we had like a comparison showing forty A, forty B.
Because a lot of it piggybacks off of, you know, some of the other chapters that we do have, you know, some of the obvious ones, you know, um. But i- in terms of, um, it, it's just, it needs to be more clearly defined.
It, it's almost like they're, they're kind of throwing stuff out, uh, wi- without it, without thinking it through, but they're just using a little bit different nomenclature along the way. And, I mean, this is the first kind, time anybody said starter home.
Right. And so that, that's the other part. Actually, maybe that's worth a comment because three bedroom. It, is that a starter home? Because they're calling it a starter home district and I get it, like a smaller house on a smaller lot. It will retain. Theoretically, it'll be more affordable than a large house on a large lot.
Right.
So theoretically, it will help to retain that affordability component over the years. It won't, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but
So maybe that's a comment to send back is if you, if you're gonna, if you're looking for starter homes, they should start off as one and two bedroom rather than and be
I would think the third bedroom would really increase the price beyond which a starter could afford.
Right.
Probably. I mean, you can do a, a three-bedroom house in a thousand square feet. Uh, that's tiny by today's standards.
Right.
And the question becomes, does anybody buy it or is it still affordable?
Right.
You know, when it's, when it's single family.
Well, so that's, that's where it's like out of necessity. When you're starting out and you can buy what you can afford, you're going to afford something smaller on a smaller lot. So maybe that, for me, that would be a comment to send back is, uh, for starter homes, we should be seeing the, more than fifty percent of these
Right.
under the three bedroom.
Well, what are they classifying as a starter home other than three bedrooms? Is it horizontal living, as my in-laws like to call it, which is one floor, not multiple floors? Is it fall within a certain square footage?
So yeah, so it says starter home not to exceed eighteen fifty. So that's a big that's a big
That gets pretty good shots. That's, that's what they're building it, uh, down in La Barrera.
Right, so I think if we, I, I would call out the square footage.
Yeah.
Should be smaller.
I would think the starter could only afford or one, single one bedroom.
And then?
Then move up to two and mostly set in kids, three, I think is way beyond. Most starters financial capabilities, probably.
Okay, so I'd say what, should be no more than two bedroom. The square, square footage should be half that or, or like, you know?
Yeah, you know, twelve, I was gonna say twelve hundred square feet.
So, not to exceed twelve hundred though.
Is it like your typical nineteen fifties ranch where it was either two to three bedroom, one bathroom, you know?
I, I grew, I grew up in a thousand square feet.
Right.
Three bedrooms.
Right.
Five kids.
Are, are we going back to that, you know, model?
The Cape and Atlantic Bridge is
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's the part that keeps it, it, it down too, is the number of bathrooms too. So like, I don't, I didn't notice, Kathy, is there anything in here about bathrooms that you noticed?
No, I didn't see anything.
I didn't star anything, so I don't, I don't know if they mentioned anything about bathrooms, but maybe it should be, you know, limited. No more than two bathrooms too.
Because this is the thing, you know, yeah, yeah, because you can't, I mean, yeah, one. I mean, this is a thing that they put together and then they shove it out and then they say,
Send us your comments.
You know what? Yeah, let's include three bathrooms, three bedrooms, ranch style.
Yeah, and all of a sudden it's not affordable by any stretch of the earth.
Right. So, um, and even, even with ADU, I think we sent back the comments that town council had provided. They were extensive.
Yeah.
And did they make any changes based on comments that we, they made, what, zero changes? Zero changes. So this is probably just a formality of asking for comments, but we can send our comments as a formality.
A formality.
Yep, um, so I'm on board with sending comments about, you know, the majority should be two bedroom. Shouldn't exceed twelve hundred square feet and limit it to one bathroom.
Yeah.
For, you know, for starter homes to actually do what it says that it's trying to do. I don't think, I don't think will be heard.
No.
But it
But I mean, we've discussed it and, you know, I mean.
Unless there's anything else anybody else wants to add. I think putting an ADU on these little lots is, is excessive too.
Yeah.
But, but as long as Title V still applies.
Yeah.
You hope you, you're okay with that.
I mean, I think starter homes is great, you know, I mean, as you said, you know, grew up in starter homes and did just fine and it was
Yeah, uh, we, we, we survived.
We survived and we fought over the bathroom, but other than that, it was, you know.
Yeah, no, the basement, well, the tires and legs.
Right, right. But, um, yeah, and, and
I think we were on like less than half an acre and they're all septic systems.
Yep.
We had town water.
Oh, that's
But, uh, but, but we're septic systems for like the first ten years and then everybody's system started to fail.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so yes, are we good with comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll
Three, three comments? Jack? Oh yeah, go for it.
I make a motion that will read, send back comments stating that rather than three bedroom, it should be two bedrooms, rather than eighteen hundred, it should be down to twelve hundred square foot.
Anything about the bathrooms?
It should be one, one bathroom.
Yeah, or, or not to exceed one and a half or something.
Oh yeah, not to exceed one and a half. I like that.
Yeah. Got to be fair, all siblings.
Yep. All right, so we have a motion.
Second?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Kathy, if you would.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Item number seven, site plan review inspections. Um, oh, we don't have anything in the packet, do we?
No, I, I know we had that conversation with Liz and she said you might want to consider taking out the, um, the binder coat. So I was going to ask her if you took that out, how that would impact the price. Did not have a chance to do that this week, but I will get to that this, next week, for sure.
Okay, so we'll just bring it back.
Yeah.
Sounds good, um. Agenda item number eight, administrative update. We have the Lakeville Country Club, Golfers Way, modification memo update. Kathy did put together this memo. It includes the comments from Apex summarized. And then at the end, it does, uh, mention that, uh, what the board had discussed. And she was able to send this off. You sent it on July second? The date that it was?
I don't recall.
Okay, but so it was sent?
It was sent last week. I actually did see, um, Mr. Max, he came in because we have the covenant and it had all been signed and notarized. So he did take that to record. He is aware of this. He, I believe they are working on that plan.
Okay.
Great.
Very good. So we will see that sometime soon. The next item, economic development, member recommendation, possible vote. So they already have a date, Monday at six o'clock for economic development. So it can be a planning board member. It could also be a designee. So I, everybody, I know John took on the, um, zoning by law, ZBRAC committee. David, you're on Serpent, I'm on CPC, Jack's on master plan. Dan, if you want to do this, if you, if, if the six P M. on Monday doesn't work, we could potentially assign Kathy. But if you can, then
Yeah, I, I, I'm fine with, um, you know, taking on, uh, being part of the economic development committee um, as an ad hoc member. Monday though, I don't think I'll be able to.
Oh, really?
Just from timing, um, perspective.
But six P M. is that going to be a workable time for you?
For Monday?
I just know, I just know you have to commute, so.
Monday, I, I won't be able to do the Monday meeting.
Ever?
No, I, I, just, just not this coming Monday, yeah.
But six o'clock on a Monday will work. Okay. Um, do we want to ask Kathy to attend on Monday instead?
That's not a problem.
Is that okay? Just so we can
Okay.
Um, so we can appoint Dan.
Yep, that's fine.
For the, um, the member, but for Kathy to sit in and bring us back anything?
Yeah, sure.
So we have representation there for the first meeting and then Dan can go from there. All right, would someone like to make the motion to, uh, recommend Dan?
I recommend Dan. We, we appoint Dan to the, uh, as the economic development member of the planning board.
All right, so we have motion and a second, Jack? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Dan, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then we'll have asked that Kathy sits in on Monday.
Kathy, I owe you. Sorry, thank you. Yeah, it's just the timing for next Monday. I just don't have the bandwidth, but going forward I should, so.
And so
What's the frequency of their meetings? Is it like ours?
He wasn't sure yet.
Hopefully I'll, I'll find out.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, we have Bella's Way, update, possible vote. So this, we have an email from the butter. He's been consistently, um, emailing Kathy, myself, a number of other, you know, people in town in regards to the issues that are, are still lasting for Bella Way. I know Jamie had been in over the winter and said that they were going to come back in spring. But I know we haven't seen or heard anything further. My thought is send it over to town council, ask for some advice because the town still has eleven thousand dollars. I don't know what that can, you know, if it could be used to complete any of it at this point. Uh, if they just don't want to move forward or, um.
So at this point, what is, what, where do we reside on this in terms of? Where does it fall here in the town? Does it go back to
So
Building Department?
Nope, so this is, so subdivision control, so it's planning board. But we don't have, you know, we don't have a planner that's overseeing this and, and honestly, the issue began with the prior to our last town planner where that prior town planner had said that everything was all set, so we had released the last lot and then come to find out the fence was never built, that there's certain things that just haven't been done, um, but the funds were never released. So my thought is we could send a memo from the planning board, just asking Jamie So my thought is we could send a memo from the planning board, just asking Jamie, you know, you'd come back over the winter. Is is there any plan to come back before this board with those items that were mentioned? I think he said they were gonna complete it. We would do a final.
Yeah, that was, that was what in the fall, I think.
I thought it was over the winter, was it in the fall? December, yeah. Um. Cause they were gonna do it, we were gonna do the the Azvill to make sure that everything was tied up and anything left after that review, then the money would be released.
Yep.
Um, but if they're not gonna do that, would my thought is reach out to town council.
Yep.
And then at the same time, send a memo over to Jamie, just, you know, ask him if they're still moving forward. If not, then we'll we'll see what else
Yeah.
we can do. So she'll be at our next meeting?
Yeah.
Um, so we might as well.
So we'll continue it.
Continue, yeah.
And bring it up.
Put it back on the agenda and um, so do we want to vote to send a memo over to Jamie, just asking for status?
Yeah, cause he'll be up, I don't know if he'll answer at that meeting, cause he'll be at the next meeting too, right?
I mean, if he choose, if he, if he gets the memo and then he decides to stick around, yeah, and we'll try to move it up for town council so that
Okay.
we can take it out of the water.
Um.
Can we do that?
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we contact Jamie. And that's he's a C Z.
Yep, Z C E.
Yep.
And as to the status of Ella's Way, whether any progress is being made to clarify and resolve the issues.
Motion in.
And we're also going to at that point continue this to our as an agenda item to our next meeting.
Yeah, but wouldn't you don't have to do this separately?
No, that's all.
That's fine. It can be all one motion. So we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, you got that one too, Kathy? All right. Um, the next item, planner position, discuss the possible vote. So um, on Monday, the select board um, discussed with um the town administrator and the H R director about the planning position. Um. I was very thankful to Maureen because she brought up the fact that planning board has been asking for an interim person for this, for the interim since March, I think it was. So she really kind of got it over the finish line. So they did uh agree and vote to allow the town administrator to bring someone in for ten hours a week in a part-time interim role. Uh, and I think he has somebody in mind that um we're gonna meet with or I'm gonna meet with um on Monday and Kathy, I think it's gonna. So that's good. Um, but then the part that, so the interim, so you know, Maureen was really good about getting them to approve that, which I'm thankful, but then they also, a couple members brought up the idea of a part-time planner, you know, and some other towns that do it. Um. And when I heard part-time, I was just like, you know, my heart sank, you know, because it's just, we have so much going on and I feel like, you know, part-time is gonna just keep us status quo and we won't be able to get these other things that we want to see done, completed. Um. So my hope was we could discuss and possibly request a joint meeting with the select board. I did reach out to Maureen, um, you know, texted her today and, you know, I had emailed um Andrew about it and he had added Maureen on, so you know, she saw that that we would be discussing this.
Yeah.
Um, I guess the select board, they all have vacations um up, you know, this, the end of this month up until, I think their next meeting is August fifth, but she said that a Zoom meeting might work for them. So I know this board seems to be pretty flexible with a Zoom meeting.
Yep.
I'm hoping that what whatever might work for them, we could be able to do.
I mean.
Yes, Jack?
Oh, go ahead.
I I guess maybe I don't, I missed the point a long time ago. Why is Derek Maxey involved?
Wait, what?
Isn't it this letter here, both of them?
No, that's that's another.
Something different?
Oh, yeah, no, that that was, that's the memo that was sent to him.
Yeah.
That was for the Lakeville Country Club one, the first item. So this is just the planner discussion.
Yeah.
Because they're talking about part-time versus full-time. I would like us to, instead of us sending a memo, I again, you know, and like I would like us to have a discussion and and we can share what what we see as the issues and and Kathy can speak to, you know, what she's experiencing and um.
So I have some preliminary comments about this. Um, first off, um having a part-time planner, in my opinion, given the volume of projects we've got going on in this town. Um, the volume that's coming through your office Kathy as well, uh, we have um multiple committees and so forth. I mean, we all learned just recently, you know, when um we had our full-time planner, just how valuable it is to have somebody here full-time.
Right.
Um. I don't see the volume going away anytime soon. And now that we have A D Us, which is, you know, we're just packing it on. So the way I look at it is a couple different ways. Um. I want to know why the board or some members of the board feel that a part-time planner is sufficient. Um, and what towns are actually um have some part-time planners, because I would be more interested in seeing what, you know, what towns were talking about, what their volume is, because again, this is Lakeville, things are different. So um, you know, again, it's proven that a full-time planner was um, you know, even when we had Mark prior to, I mean, having a full-time planner is definitely a necessity here in this town.
And a good one.
And a good one, yeah. The second thing is, is uh in terms of salary, I mean, right now, we've got a, you know, I I'm assuming I that the salary that we had will also is being transferred over into the fiscal year twenty-six budget, so that hasn't gone away. Um.
So to that point, if I may interject right now, so the other item that was discussed, um, and this actually kind of evolved when I had been talking to Andrew at one point, um having a a tier, like a planner one, who could be someone that doesn't have as much experience, a lower salary rate. And then a tier two, where you have the experienced planner who can hit the ground running. The benefit to having that lower salary rate and then having the op, this planner, interim planner who could potentially be a consultant, like someone who that who that new person who might not have all the experience could now have a sounding board um for the items that maybe aren't familiar or processes that aren't familiar. So I I liked, I liked, you know, that idea too of maybe changing the job description, leaving them both though. So if we have, if somebody with all this experience comes along and or or you know, starts looking for a new place to work, we could take a planner two at that at that budget and amount. But having the option of someone with less experience and then being able to utilize someone with more experience to help
Yep.
um with that transition and hopefully get them to that point where they'll go from planner one to planner two and we don't need.
I I just want to be careful about losing that salary amount.
Right.
So that's allocated to something else, because, believe me, I work in operations, I see it all the time, so. Um, so I I I would want to make sure that, you know, however it's drafted, that, you know, we take a really close look at it and see, you know, if it makes sense, you know. Uh, I mean, yeah, because again, there's it's been tough not having an additional person here. Um. Especially for you, Kath, um as well, you know, I mean, the volume again is not going away and I will advocate for having whatever this board decides, but at least, at least.
Full time.
Full time.
Yeah, so I would just, so Jack, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just a couple comments. If you go into Kathy's office, or when Mark was there, or when Nancy was there, the amount of paperwork and stuff that goes on in there. There's a need for planner in ten hours a week that someone's proposing. So that's five, five days, say they'll work two hours. You know, so to get there, you go home. What are you gonna get done? I think that's nonsense.
But that's just the interim, which I'm glad that we're getting something for the interim. I just don't want to see, that shouldn't be.
The norm.
You know, I just, having a primary and a secondary planner, I just, I hope that the secondary one doesn't become a paper shuffler.
So it wouldn't be two, it wouldn't be two roles. It would be, you know.
I know, but it's.
Two, two, two different positions listed, but.
Yeah, but if you're the boss and I'm the secondary, you just may say to me, do this, do this.
We wouldn't be hiring two. It would be just two different job descriptions, you know, the planner one versus.
I prefer would, I I prefer to put our money behind someone like Nancy.
Believe me, I do too, but I but I think.
Wow. I mean, there's, there are other, obviously there are other nuances out there. It's a matter of finding him or her.
Right.
Yeah.
I'd rather, I myself would rather go with one.
Yeah.
And and put our money behind someone good.
Right.
The other thing I just thought of, which I'm sorry bringing this up again, but um the uh, reporting lines for this, for the temporary person.
Mm-hmm.
Who would that fall under?
Andrew.
Andrew. And then are we thinking the same thing for this new position as well, after the fact?
Yeah, as far as I know, like none of that's changed.
Reporting lines, okay. All right.
So would we like to send a memo over to the select board requesting a joint meeting?
Yep.
Zoometh need be at a day and time of their choosing. But, you know, figuring that'll be most likely.
As soon as possible.
Something that we can do, yeah, prior to that August fifth. Because I even offered, because usually um we have C P C on the third Thursday of the month at six thirty, so we're usually here in the police station, but we're foregoing the meeting uh this month, so I've been saying we could do it. But but then finding out that they're all having vacations, they probably won't have availability for an in-person, so the Zoom might work.
Does it also make sense that we also discuss our um our our need that, you know, this is, this should be a priority position so that we would like to get somebody hired in by, let's say, October or the fall at the end of the first quarter?
Well, honestly, like, we were hoping to have somebody in, but it it fell through. So I think it's a matter of um who applies to, like, I you can't, you can't
Yeah.
pull it out of thin air, unfortunately.
Because you gotta advertise it, right?
Yeah, because if you don't get some good energy upfront, it takes the whole process.
And we don't want to just settle for whoever comes along, you know, we want somebody that.
You just don't want it, something.
But I would just say, so I already, I have my pa, I have, that's my list, you know what I mean? I have a page of things that I want, I you know, my needs and I'm hoping Kathy can bring your experience.
Kathy, you should.
Not right now, but I'm saying to the joint meeting, everybody come with your list and.
I would think Kathy would be a great source to provide some good, you're right there to think of it, so.
Yep. So would someone like to make the motion to send the memo to the select board requesting a joint meeting via Zoom? Date and time of their availability prior to August fifth?
I make a motion that we send a memo to the select board requesting a joint meeting regarding the position of a planning, regarding the planning position via, we could do it via Zoom potentially.
So move, Jack.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, you got three memos, Kathy. We have the, oh, so we have, our next meeting is supposed to be July twenty-fourth here. But we also have an invite to the master plan for the twenty-first. I had said, I told them that I'll go. I know Jack will be the.
I'll be there, you but.
But if one more person, but if one more person goes, we have to, we have to.
Open meeting?
Yeah, but you're the, you're the most knowledgeable one. I mean, I can't speak to any, any of the depth that you could, so you you know, I my suggestion is you be there, I mean, you all.
No, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna be there, you're gonna be there, but so what I'm saying, if one more person from this board wants to go, we'll have to post it for open meeting law purposes. So anybody else?
Meetings are very short, so we can go.
It's Monday at six P M, so I know Dan can't go.
It's it's this Monday?
It's this Monday, the twenty-first.
It's a short meeting.
Twenty-first, yeah, that's.
No, that's a.
Not this Monday.
Couple weeks.
The twenty-first.
Yeah, the twenty-first.
So not this Monday, it's the following Monday.
Yeah, I I would go, let's post it.
You wanna go?
Yeah.
Maybe. So we'll post it, okay. Post.
We'll well represent.
Kathy, are you able to post that one?
Yeah.
Or do you want me to?
No, I got plenty of time.
I want to go on a vacation.
Uh, well, just let, if you can't get to it, let me know and I'll try to, this time I'll try to not forget it. Um, all right, but.
And that's here?
So that is.
Uh, yeah, they do them here.
Here, okay.
Now, I think they like to do them at six o'clock.
Yeah, six P M.
Yep, that's what I got.
Okay, six P M, here.
I already had here.
Master plan, joint meeting. I'll let John know in case he wants to go and um.
Right.
Yeah, and I think it's just discussing our um
Yeah.
our priorities and.
Well, what we want is to talk to each one of the, mainly the chairman of the each board as to, right, and then we could take a look at the goals, right here.
Right.
That's all.
Yep. Absolutely. All right, so we'll post for that and then our next planning board meeting is July twenty-fourth here at the police station unless we can get a joint meeting.
At six.
Yep.
So our next meeting, yes, so actually it's uh, we'll look to start it at either six or six thirty, depending on SIRP. And then the public hearings will start at seven.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other business?
No.
No.
Anybody?
We're just waiting on a meeting.
All right, motion to adjourn. Was that what I heard, Jack? Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.